Policy. And that brings us to the consent agenda.
I guess I, before that, Dustin, was there any public comment that was presented to you prior?
No.
Okay. Then I would move that we waive the readings and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. I show that Chuck Gardner made the motion and then Counselor Tulowitzki seconded. And for the roll vote, Counselor Gardner votes.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
You're on mute, Counselor Kulturitis.
Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. Did I hear Counselor Kulturitis vote a yes?
Yes.
Very good. Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. And then President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. We have five zero on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Wendy. Okay, so that brings us, I'm trying to see the, the agenda. Okay, this brings us to the, let's see, town, the Plan Commission, this brings us to the amendment to the landscape ordinance. I'm sorry, I'm having problems getting my screen down here. Okay.
I would move that we adopt ordinance number seventeen ninety-five on second reading.
Second.
We have a, have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Any discussion?
Sorry, any discussion, I apologize.
Just a general question, if anything has changed since first reading on this one?
No. No, nothing has changed.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right, I can go ahead and go do the roll then. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. We have a five zero on ordinance number seventeen ninety-five.
All right, thank you. And that brings us to ordinance, ordinance seventeen ninety-six, Third Amendment to the 2020 Salary Ordinance, Second Reading.
This is the second reading on this. There have been minor changes from first reading two weeks ago, and that is due to getting this in compliance with the, the Family First Federal Mandate. We've changed, made that a priority to, I was going to read it off there. We've made that a priority. Essentially, what this ordinance allows is for employees who may not have enough of a leave bank in their sick leave and their vacation bank. It allows them to go into the negative up to ten days sick time and five days of vacation. Take care of childcare due to school closings or something related to the COVID-19. This will go into effect as of March sixteenth, which would have been our regularly scheduled council meeting. And it will stay in effect until the end of the year or until council decides differently.
Any questions for Wendy? We discussed at the last meeting. It's a good and necessary move. Keep everybody safe in our, you know, in the town, I believe. I think we all agreed on that.
I move we accept, or I move we adopt the proposed ordinance seventeen ninety-six on second reading today.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I will ask one more time, I already did about discussion, but any, any points before we call the vote? All right, Wendy, if you could do the honor.
Certainly. I show Dr. Andy, Counselor Kulturitis, making the motion, and Counselor Tulowitzki making the second. And for the roll call vote, Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. Counselor, or President Mellon votes yes. That is a five zero vote, passing ordinance seventeen ninety-six on second reading.
Thank you. And that moves us to new business, and our first item is refinancing of the Series 2010 Economic Development Bonds. We have the engagement letters and a memo. Dustin, if you want to say anything about this?
Sure. It's not really anything that dissimilar to refinancing of any, of any other long-term debt obligation. In 2010, we issued five point three million dollars in economic development bonds. This was for the Land of Frost project over on Columbia. And there is an opportunity, those bonds are callable this summer, which means they're able to be refinanced ninety days before their call date, which is July first. So we had an analysis done by a private placement agent and our underwriter, Stiefel and Baker Tilly respectively. And their analysis found a likely savings for the next ten years of the debt issuance of between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars. So that would reduce those debt service obligations of the town by that much over the, the next ten years, so twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand a year. The, the obvious question to anybody would be, well, what does the current calamity have to do, if anything, with the refinancing of this? So I asked our underwriter at Baker Tilly, or asked our bond counsel at Barnes and Thornburg. And they each said that the deals that they're doing right now have not been impacted. Will that be the case in thirty to sixty days when this is ready to go? I don't know. They don't know either. The good news is that if the market moves away and it's not financially advantageous to do this, then there's no harm in pressing pause and waiting for the right time to do it. We don't have to pay twice for this. So I think this is a pretty straightforward transaction.
All right, thank you.
There's a question from Ms. Abbott.
Which bond issue is this? It says in the paperwork, the 2010 bond issue. Isn't that the Panera site, not Land of Frost?
Is it Panera?
Yes.
Okay, I misspoke. It's Panera, not Land of Frost.
Okay, great. So. All right, I think you answered, because my, my question was just going to be, is there any reason, you know, not to do this during this time? If there's any, you know, for us to hold off, it sounds like we can put the brakes on if that's necessary, if conditions change. So you answered the questions.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a question for Dustin. The fees that we pay to our providers, are those added to the principal? Or we pay them out over the coming ten years, or is it something like cash out of pocket?
It is baked into the refinancing. So if you were to look at the analysis of Baker Tilly, on the, I believe, let's see, is it the, yes, it's the second page of the Baker Tilly Analysis tab. You'll see project costs. Those project costs are baked into the analysis. So that's how they're paid at the refinancing from the proceeds.
Okay, so we won't have, we won't have a big chunk that we're paying in 2020. And we'll just see the reduce, the reduction whenever it goes through. You said they don't know the next thirty, sixty days what's going to happen, but I'm assuming that they will check before we do the refinancing, given
Yes.
low interest rates. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move we approve and authorize Tom Manager to sign in and engage letters for Baker Tilly, Stiefel, and Barnes and Thornburg for the refinancing of the Series 2010 EDC Bonds.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, questions? Okay, I believe, seeing none, I believe this, we can do this via voice vote. Is that correct? Or should we, do we want to call roll since we're given?
As it's a virtual meeting, we all have to, they all have to be a roll call vote.
That makes sense.
Okay. All right, I show Counselor Kulturitis making the motion. It's seconded by Counselor Schoen. And for the vote, Counselor Gardner?
Yes, I did it.
The, the second was.
Seconded, thank you. That's.
I relinquished that second. It wasn't me.
Very good. I show Counselor Kulturitis making the motion. Counselor Gardner seconding the motion. Very good. And now for the vote. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon votes yes. I show that passing five to zero.
Thank you. And next up on, under new business is the 2020 Lake Pond and Ditch Maintenance Program with Aquatic Control.
This is annual maintenance for our stormwater infrastructure that is not underground. Aquatic Control has offered to keep their pricing at the same level as it was. We have a good relationship with them, and if you think it's an appropriate expense, we would like to continue to do this work.
I move that we approve and authorize proposal number two six six two four two from Aquatic Control for the 2020 Custom Vegetation Management Program for a cost of twenty thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
I do have a quick question. This is Wendy. From a standing financial standpoint, we need to look at our CapEx. Just to be certain that we're spending money on essential services for the town. And as these two contracts, this is the valid item, are over thirty thousand dollars. I just want to be certain that this is an essential expenditure or an essential contract for us to enter into.
Are you asking for our opinion, or are you, are you looking for a definition from our attorney, Wendy?
Your opinion's fine.
Okay, well, if we have a fairly hot summer, all these ponds are going to look pretty gnarly green and full of algae. And they're really hard to actually try to maintain after that. And then we take the risk of actually having to actually replace all the pumps that are in some of these ponds too. So at this point, I mean, I would, I would say it's, it is essential right now, unless something otherwise, you know, if we have anything else that kind of, that's catastrophic. So I'm in favor of moving forward with it at this point.
Tricia Abbott has a question. I'm, I'm looking at the memo and the motion that was made, and it's, it gave one amount, but the actual proposal is a different amount.
The proposal was, the, the amount recommended in the memo contemplated this being picked up in March, which there would have been a price discount. So the price proposal and the recommendation would probably, the recommendation would follow the price proposal, which is twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
But the motion and the recommended action was for the lower amount.
Yes, that was, I did not update the memo, and that is my fault, because it was for March sixteenth, which is before April first. And if this were to be paid before April first, there would have been a reduced price. So this was my error. When you read the recommendation, that is my fault that the recommendation was not updated to reflect the delta between twenty thousand eight hundred, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents, and the twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So if someone would like to, if it's your choice, if you choose to move forward, the way to move forward would be to amend your motion for a program cost of twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I am sorry for the inconvenience.
Dustin, I was actually just going to ask a question about that. If the vendor, given the circumstances of us skipping a, a public meeting, would be willing to honor that three percent discount?
I am happy to ask that question, but I think just to be on the safe side, you might, if you want to move forward on this item, you would still amend the, the recommendation for perhaps a price not to exceed.
And if. I will move to amend the recommendation to reflect the program cost of twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and request, request the three percent discount from the vendor. But not to exceed that twenty-one thousand six thirty-seven amount.
We have an amended motion.
Who, who seconded that? Did I second that? Wendy?
Ken, I have Ken Schoen seconding it. I have a very low, but I, Ken Schoen noted.
There seemed to be two voices speaking at that time.
Okay, well, then you're going to have to agree to that, Ken, since you're the second.
I do agree to it.
Okay.
We have a motion and an amended motion and a second of the amended motion.
I, I would only add to the comments that Wendy mentioned, the, the clerk treasurer with regards to essential. I would refer to Mr. Anderson or Public Works. I would assume that we need to maintain these ponds and lakes, but again, does, does Tom Manager have any recollection or any input on that?
It's a piece of our stormwater infrastructure, more than a, a design feature. It retains water. It releases water at a controlled rate. I, there was a question asked before the meeting, I think it was a good question. What would be the cost of taking a year off? I don't know the answer to that question. I, I think that you would see, you know, fragmites, we all see fragmites along the highway. They go pretty fast. But I don't know the answer to the question, and I think that it is a worthwhile conversation to have. Moving forward, we, we do, clerk treasurer and Mrs. absolutely right that we have to take a look at what we spend our money on. One hundred percent agree. On this particular item, I don't know the delta on taking a year off. I do know that we're in the county of Lake. Water is an issue. Drainage is an issue, even under good circumstances. And on something that has to do with stormwater maintenance, I would feel probably more comfortable maintaining it than not. But that's, that's a gut reaction, not an act, not a, not a cold analysis of the alternatives.
So it's just an unknown. So we have no way, it could cost us a lot more to catch up or not. We, we don't really have any, like you said, we don't have any data to back to tell us either way.
Okay, well, no, I, my, my, my feeling also is, is much like Dr. Kulturitis, that, again, some of this maintenance, if you don't do it now, it, it costs more in the end if you don't do it initially. So, and, and again, when it comes to stormwater, like, like Mr. Anderson's talking about, I think it's very important, so.
Before we move on, Mr. Westland has indicated that he has a question for the group.
Not a question, just a comment. And my comment was going to be that I think the maintenance of town-owned property and infrastructure is clearly within the definition of the executive order for essential matters. While I think the inquiry and the question that Wendy raises is good, I think, you know, this is, this clearly fits in with, you know, what the governor, governor's intent was relative to essential matters.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did every, everyone had a chance to speak who wanted to? Right.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Wendy, can you call the roll, please?
Certainly. I show an amended motion takes not to exceed twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars to perform pond maintenance. We are going to request the three percent. That amended motion was made by Counselor Tulowitzki and was seconded by Counselor Schoen. And the roll call vote, Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. The amended motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Wendy. That brings us up to sister business, if you will, the annual fountain maintenance proposals from Aquatic Control.
Very similar to the same, the prior.
So that.
Only this deals specifically with the fountains that we maintain. And I think the same questions and the same concerns, again, are equally as valid. This one's a little bit more clear, the alternative, because we have replaced pumps before. I could run those costs down if you were so inclined to table this and ask that question. But this is for the, the maintenance, storage, installation of our fountain pumps.
And there's no discount on this one, I suppose.
Afraid not, sir.
Well, I will move to approve the aquatic control proposals for 2020 and 2021 Fountain Winter Removal Maintenance Storage and 2021 Spring Install at eight thousand two, two hundred and sixty dollars. And robust air annual maintenance at three hundred and seventy-four cents for a total cost of eight thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars seventy-four cents.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Very good. I shall show Counselor Tulowitzki making the motion, and it was seconded by Counselor Kulturitis. For the roll call, Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoen?
Yes.
Counselor Schoen votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. It passes five to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to item D under new business, which is the Streetscape and Corridor Improvement Plan Service Contract with Tesca Associates. Dustin, do you want to speak to this?
We actually have Tom here.
Oh, hi, Tom, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
Could you unmute yourself, Tom?
Can you mute? We're going to get some feedback, maybe. All right, well, tonight I'm presenting a service contract with Tesca Associates of Evanston, Illinois, in partnership with Sam Schwartz Engineering. We would like to sign a contract with them to develop a streetscaping and corridor improvement plan for the Ridge Road and North Calumet Avenue business districts. You'll probably recall, at the end of 2019, we completed our zoning update. So we've put together a document that addresses the sort of upgrades that we want to see on the private, within the private realm and with respect to private development. At this point now, we're hoping to kind of take the next step and put together a plan for the improvement of the public realm. So what we're hoping to do is, I'm a little, it's kind of hard for me to talk here, because I'm getting this echo, so I apologize. But last year, we actually secured a grant for fifty thousand dollars from the Lake Michigan Coastal Program. It's a fifty fifty grant, which means that we cover half the cost and they match fifty thousand. So we've got a hundred thousand dollars that we put together for this plan. Late last year, we did a request for proposals. We solicited a number of proposals. We actually received a huge response, fifteen responses. The staff here reviewed all those responses. We selected two. We interviewed them. And we determined that Tesca, the group that I'm presenting here, was the most qualified. This group has done a number of planning activities throughout the Chicago region. As I mentioned, they're based in Evanston, Illinois. And they're partnered with Sam Schwartz, which is one of the leading transportation engineering firms when it comes to pedestrian planning and walkability. So I've included the, the proposal that they had originally submitted, along with my memo, as well as the contract that we negotiated with them for the work. I'll just note that the contract has been reviewed by Dave Westland. He made a couple of suggestions which have been incorporated into the, into the final contract. So the proposal is for a ten-month project. It has an extensive level of public involvement. However, given the sort of constraints that we have right now with the coronavirus and social distancing, it's likely that we're going to have to modify the scope a little bit. We're going to have to think of some different ways to gather public input on the front end and conduct traffic studies when there's no rush hour to speak of. So we're going to have to tweak that scope a little bit. And we may end up extending the timeline beyond ten months. So we may go into, you know, maybe this time next year, I would say. That being said, that's fine from a grant standpoint, because our grant is good through June of next year. So we have plenty of time to do the project. We do want to get started on it, and that's kind of why we brought it to the council tonight for approval. So I'll take any questions if there are any.
Counselors, any questions?
The only, the only thing that I have is to Wendy's point right now, this, this is a project that I, with what's happening right now, to actually start spending money on something like this, I think we could probably hold off on something like this, because this isn't truly maintenance issue. And you're talking about, what, about forty, fifty thousand dollars out of our pocket right now? And I, I think that money might be better spent elsewhere at this point. So, no, I'm just echoing what Wendy mentioned earlier on this. And I know we've got a fifty fifty split with the grant money, but this, you know, this is something we definitely need to address. But I'm not sure if this is the best time to be giving away that type of money. So that's just my opinion on this.
That's a good point, a valid point. The funds are budgeted out of a, a bond issue that has been issued. So it's not a, it may or may not influence your decision on how you conceptualize this. But it's not taking money from an operations perspective. It is from a capital fund that's been planned and programmed. That being said, it is, again, your call.
As I remember from working with the, the park board years back, when we got a grant that was funded, the money was restricted to certain things. And I assume that this, this grant funds, you know, of course, are allowed to be used for this kind of project. The fifty thousand that we also received as the matching money, I assume will be lost if we don't go ahead with this project. So.
Yeah.
That's correct. And that's kind of, as I said, one of the reasons why we're actually bringing it now, as, as far as, you know, does this qualify as an essential service?
No, but because we do have a timeline, and if we don't adhere to our timeline and get the project done by June of, of next year, then we will lose that money.
I would hate to see that happen.
Dustin?
We, excuse me, we would lose the grant money, not our money, correct?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Within it.
Go ahead.
Within, okay. With an improved streetscape, it'll improve the image of the town. I would assume that's one of the reasons we're doing this. And that would improve property values. And so I see it as an investment in the future, which we can't forget about at this time. And I am thoroughly aware of the fact that we have financial difficulties and have to watch our money. But I don't think we, we necessarily have to forget about the, the monies we would spend, sort of like seed money, to make a better future for the town.
Good point, Ken. And Dustin and Tom both, I was just wondering, does this, by doing this, going through this process, does it help us set up for securing other grant money? Like with, we look at, I think, I believe I remember something about that as far as like as we look at Main Street and there are a lot of moving parts. And after we come out of this, hopefully sooner than later, that the train's continuing and we have Main, I mean, Main Street, I get it as a separate, separate from the, these two corridors. However, just in general, talking about grants for us improving traffic flow, streetscape, et cetera, is this helpful to us?
It's extraordinarily helpful. There are federal funds and state funds that we can avail ourselves to if we have the plans in place. Doesn't mean we'll get them, but it does mean we'd be competitive. So that is a, that is a valid point.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And one of the items that we have as the deliverable for this plan is kind of a budget analysis and a set of projects. So we'll have a discreet list of projects and cost estimates. So for example, new light fixtures, you know, new, new paver sidewalks, things like that. We'll know exactly how much they cost. And so we'll be able to go out and apply for the grants. And it looks like we've done our homework and we know what we're asking for.
Right, so just having dreams and no data to back it up.
The, the project that we're talking about here is a six-month type project. But Tom, you're saying that possibly that what Tesca's proposing at six months now might end up being an eight, the nine-month process just because of gathering additional public input and/or different things of timing nature?
The scope originally called for a 10-month project. I'm anticipating that we may end up tacking on a couple of extra months. So it'd be more like a year-long project.
Okay.
Which then brings us close to that deadline for the, for the grant, correct?
Yes.
This is Steve. I'm curious what other dependencies there are. I appreciated the conversation around doing the plan enables us to much better prepare to apply for grants when we actually do the streetscape work. I'm curious what other projects this is linked to? If it's to the South Shore Rail Extension or anything else that you think would inform whether or not we, we move forward with this right now?
Yeah, I think that's a great point. That did enter into our conversations as we were discussing the scope of this project. We don't know what form the Transit Development District's grants will take, but it's our anticipation that if we have a list of capital projects that we need to see completed, we'll be able to tap into that Transit Development District funding for those projects. And it'll, it'll be able to support any development that happens in that area.
And if I remember right, from the working section we did with the RDA, the area we're talking about for this streetscape falls within the realm of what could be drawn in the, in the TDD map. Is that correct?
Yes.
My other curiosity is if, is if things really get bad, to, you know, to Wendy's point and keeping an eye on our money in, in the next month or throughout the course of this summer, what ability do we have to sort of press pause on this one? And or how, if we would start later, how can we still, you know, fund it and get the, the full grant money? Maybe that's two separate questions. Let me take the first one. How do we press pause? Or can we press pause? And if so, what does that do for us financially?
We would, we could suspend work, I suppose. I mean, this, the price proposal is for hours build work, right? So if we say you can't bill us anymore, then we don't get billed. That's how it would work. Could you remind me the part B of your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking Dustin and Tom about, is there a way that we could ramp up the work? Like maybe get started now, spend a bit less now, since we're, I know in the proposal there were some, as Tom mentioned, public interaction points, which aren't going to happen in the next month or two in all likelihood. Is there a way to like, maybe be spending more at the backend so that if things really get bad, to Andy's point, we, we, maybe we've spent a little bit of the money, but we could press pause on this right now without having spent our whole $50,000?
Yeah, right now, it, it's good to start now because to Tom's point, I think your point, the ability to interact with the public in a kind of meaningful, robust way is hampered, to say the least. But there is a lot of fine-grained background detail work that the firm can do with parcel analysis. The most recent in that data for traffic counts. It won't be the most recent, but that doesn't preclude them from beginning to analyze existing data. So there is work to do, but the bulk of it will probably be in the engagement and the production rather than the background that's going on now.
And I would just, I would add that one reason why I see it important to get started with this would be the same reason that we wanted to get our, the other big project we did. When we, we changed our code and we did all that public engagement. Because one of the reasons we wanted to do that was so that we defined what we wanted to happen before it was defined, our ideas brought to us regarding the train. So we could kind of shape what it was, how we see our town forming. Dustin, you, you and I have had, had many conversations about this and Tom as well. Just, so this gives us a blueprint. And so we already know, we're not saying, you know, they bring us up and we're like, oh, okay, maybe that sounds good. You know, we have a solid understanding of what our residents and we want to see. So that's just getting ahead of the game, I believe. And not, you know, being proactive, not reactive to the situation.
Yeah. Dr. Andy has his hand up, and I just want to build on that point because decisions that are going to be made with that, that. If that train comes.
The question I had was with this, is our money first in or is it the grant money first in? Whose money goes in first?
So the way that it works, it is a reimbursement grant, but we can be reimbursed as we spend the money. So we submit quarterly reports and quarterly reimbursement requests.
So we, so Tom, so what you're saying is that we could actually spend up to $50,000? And if everything is not going the, you know, the direction we want it to go, we can pretty much put them on hold for the money that's truly coming out of our pocket?
I'm not sure I understand.
This thing is going to cost about $100,000. We're getting $50,000 grant. If you're telling me they're going to start doing work and we're going to start sending off statements so that we can get reimbursed for the, the money that we're going to be paying for this, this plan right now, we're not giving them $100,000 right off, right off the bat, are we?
Oh, no, correct.
Right?
Yes.
So if we're being charged an hourly rate and if things start going south, we get up to $50,000, we can more or less say we need to put a hold on this until we can get our finances situated.
In an emergency situation, yeah, we could stop if, if it came to that. I would ask maybe Dave Westland to comment on the, on the procedures for making that happen for the contract.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and like actually pull the contract back up here and take a look to see your rights and obligations in terms of stopping work at some point. I mean, it is an hourly-based contract, so you're only going to be paying while they do work. You have the right to terminate the agreement by written notice 30 days prior to the effective date. In that event, all unfinished and finished documents are given to you. You have to pay for any work that's done. To coin a phrase that Dustin uses from time to time, that would be suboptimal.
I think what I'm, oh, sorry, Ken, do you want to say something?
No, go ahead, go ahead, Steve.
I think what I'm hearing might make everyone more comfortable is to see with the vendor if they can have, if there's a way to scope this work so that it's, say, in two phases. And the first phase is like the COVID phase, maybe the basics of the things that we, that they can do right now and that can help us prepare for future grants. And then once we're past the window of knowing if business is going to go back to, to, to normal, how we're going to get, you know, emergency funding from the state of Indiana or from the federal government, we can have more confidence to then turn this into high gear, you know, which is when, until that point, we won't be able to do a lot of the outreach anyways. It sounds like we may be able to do that with the contract, but we'd have to, we'd have to do some things that aren't in the proposal right now. And that's just, I think what I'm hearing is, could we, because we all, I think we want to get started. I want to get started. This is important work. And I love what President Mellon has said about getting in front of the TDD, knowing what people in town want so that we can move quickly and properly on that. Yeah, but I'm a little nervous to spend, to, to commit the money right now. Yeah, so could we optimize the work in two phases, like a COVID phase and then, and then a backend phase? That's my question.
President Mellon, can I make a men, a comment here? They did, Tesca did present their plan in three different sections, phase one, phase two, and phase three. And each section is going to take about three months is what they originally proposed. And they do have costs associated with each, each of the three phases in the packet. I, I am concerned about future finances of the town, especially with lack of property taxes and things along that nature. But I do think this is a very important project. And I think we do need to start this and, and give this enough time so they can take the three or four months to get a good introduction going and that we can get this completed so we have time to be able to lead the charge when it comes to the Transportation District and, and actually also incorporate some of the current planning and, you know, planning code that we just passed six months ago and, and put some of those practices into our, our streetscapes and things like that. So I certainly understand the concern about finances. But I do think if we find that there are some things that certainly I think there, there's potential there because it is broken down into three phases already. But I would think that this is an important project to move forward with at this time.
Mr. Westland has his hand up.
So kind of going up what Mr. Gardner just said, the three phases, you know, maybe the, excuse me, maybe the answer is to rework these phases. Because the first phase is like a lot of community outreach stuff, the meetings. The third phase is the last phase, which is basically drafting their report based on the first two phases. But so maybe the answer is, is that a discussion with Tesca to try to rework in this environment, how they plan on doing these phases? Because you're not going to be able to have these meetings and pop-up visioning events and all this other stuff that's kind of with presentations and the like. So, you know, maybe that's the answer, is to go back to them and try to rework how they're going to do the phases in light of the, the current environment.
Well, maybe that's exactly what needs to happen here, right? Because no one's actually made a motion at this point. So maybe we can actually address that before we get, you know, we move forward with this.
If I can add one thing, part of the first phase is actually developing that public involvement plan. And in terms of that plan, we will have to change some things based on the social distancing that we're now experiencing. That being said, I don't know if it's possible to really alter the chronology of the phases because sort of the, the first phase has to be public involvement. You have to get the stakeholders and the residents involved at the beginning to craft that broad vision. And then once they've provided that to us, we can then sort of refine it into actual planning concepts.
Tom or Dustin, when was the last time we talked to Tesca about this project?
Probably about a week ago.
Did they say anything about social distancing and impact or showing?
Yeah, they mentioned the fact that, yeah, we're going to have to really think differently about how we do some of the engagement on the front end. And some, we're going to think a little bit differently about the initial data collection with respect to traffic volumes.
Yeah, you know, in my day job, I'm working in a professional services firm and we're all asking our clients how we can help and ready to work differently. We understand the reality of the, of the new world. So I would, it sounds like they already know, they're already thinking about how to change this. So perhaps, yeah, that, that would be my preference, I think, that we go back and ask them for a COVID approach, a multi-phase approach.
If I may, it sounds to me like the approach, I could be wrong, but from what Tom's saying, it sounds like the approach, it will automatically change and delay a tad. Like we, it's already, you've got to do the first portion of it, like Tom said. But it'll be redefined. I don't know that, I mean, if we ask them to put a, I don't know if we're, what we're, we're wanting to ask them. Do we put together, they put together a, a new proposal on how they're going to reach out? And then bring it back? I don't know if that's something that we, that we want to ask them to do or not. Just see, it seems like me, it's going to be a natural change because it's going to be somewhat forced. You know what I'm saying? No, we won't meet in the park. They will, but they can send the surveys out now. Tom, do, do you see any value in having them redefine how they want to? I'm just asking. I don't, I don't know the answer to it.
Well, I think, yeah, we're definitely going to have to review, for example, the school workshop. That's not going to happen. There is no school.
Right. So it's automatically going to get pushed back. I guess that's my point, sort of that automatically some of the work that they had defined will now be moving to a different three-month chunk. That probably, that would probably happen because it makes it be very important to have that to happen in, you know, the last three months of the year instead. Which then will get filled based on when it actually happens, not, not now.
If, if I could make a motion that we table this, this proposal for the streetscape project and have it, have Mr. Vanderwoody and Mr. Anderson talk with Tesca, clarify the, the contract with regards to the, the crisis that. with regards to the, the crisis that we're facing right now and bring back something I would be obliged even to consider it at the next, at the next council meeting. But I, I think we need to, I think we need to have a much better support from the, the council for this, this important project. I think it needs to get done, but I, I do think that we need to clarify what, especially with the community outreach phase of this project is going to be.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other input, questions?
Yeah, I, I, I think what we're asking them to do, if I can clarify, is just to go back and, you know, they know they're going to change the work, just make the proposal meet, you know, what the reality looks like today and clarify to them the sort of financial uncertainty that we're in. Yeah.
I, I would just, oh, sorry. Sure.
One uncertainty. Sorry, I don't, I can't raise my hand. Besides the fact that we have a smaller budget this year than we would love to have had, because of the COVID-19 problems, a lot of taxes are going to be paid late. I don't know if that means we're going to be getting funds later than we normally do. And I don't, it's not, that's not something we would have been planning, you know, when the council was coming up with the budget then, last year. So I wonder, I, I think it's very prudent to be very careful of how we're spending our money, thinking that we may not be getting the funds from, from the state that we normally do.
Right.
Well, I think that, that's a point well taken. And this isn't to say that we should be cavalier with how we approach our money, but this money is budgeted for, it exists, we're not waiting for a property tax disbursement to use these funds. So still, I think it's totally appropriate to wait, totally fine, but I think that's just a point of information, so we're all dealing with the same set of facts as we go forward.
And I would just add one more thing before we call for a vote. So Tom, when you do speak to Tesca, if they think that the engagement that they have lined out or outlined for us now is the best way to do it, but they think they can do that in fall, I mean, often our weather tends to, you know, our so-called summer weather bleeds into, well into October. I don't necessarily, you know, I don't want it to be less effective and, and not, not as good as what it could have been, I guess is what I'm saying. So if they can say, you know, we can do the work, do groundwork now, but then we still want to host some of these things and let's, you know, hopefully we'll be back to normal by the fall. I know there's no guarantee, but you, you see what I'm saying? I don't want them to take it and change everything that they're doing if they think, I want their expertise on what is the best way to get the, the information that we really truly want from the residents. So, I mean, that would just be my, I wouldn't scrap, I guess, I guess that's my point. I wouldn't scrap the school feedback just because we don't have school right now. Hopefully we'll all be back in the fall. So you'll have to see what they have to say about that, but that is one.
Yeah, I think what I'll do if.
Just use the microphone on the desk, that's why we called you. Yeah. I keep, I keep muting you, but nevertheless, you persist. I'm going to kick you.
So what I'll do, I'm thinking what I'll do maybe is I'll ask them to prepare sort of a parallel public involvement scope. So it would say, if we can't do what's in the scope here, what is the alternative to that? So that, you know, next year, if we do end up in a situation where we can have a school workshop maybe early in the school year, let's, let's do it. But if that, we still can't for whatever reason, then here's the alternative.
Okay. Sounds good. Well, if, if no one has further comments, we have a motion and a second to table this until the, our next regular scheduled meeting, which is, someone help me, I've lost.
April 20th.
April 20th.
So Wendy, can you call the roll please? Or do we, please, thank you.
As we're taking, I show that Counselor Gardner made the recommendation to table the discussion to our April 20th meeting and it was seconded by Counselor Tulowitzki.
Correct.
Very good, thank you. I will call the roll. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoon?
Yes.
Counselor Schoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon votes yes. That's a five zero vote to table this discussion to our April 20th Town Council meeting.
All right, thank you. That brings us to our last item and this is the 2020 proclamation for Arbor Day. So Munster has a strong reputation of being a tree-friendly town and I think you can see that as we drive around. I, I always notice when we cross into, you know, cross into some towns, we're like, oh, not, not quite as much planning, especially what we're doing with our parking lots, et cetera. So I do have a proclamation here and it's not going to let me get it, so. Dustin, would you by any chance want to read the proclamation for Arbor Day because I am not.
I gotta tell you, I've been waiting five years for this moment.
We've stolen it from you all along. Now, here.
A proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore it be proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster hereby support April 24th, 2020 as Arbor Day and encourages its citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And be it further proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Munster encourages all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you. And we need no action on that, or do we? I apologize.
I move we adopt the proclamation.
Yes, I guess you do. Correct. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Wendy, call the roll please.
I show Counselor Kulturitis has a motion to adopt the proclamation. Counselor Tulowitzki seconded it. The roll call vote is Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoon?
Yes.
Counselor Schoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
To gladden my heart, yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki gladly votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
President Mellon votes yes. Five to zero, we are proclamating Arbor Day in Munster.
Thank you.
You just coined a new word.
We have no reports and no, and our announcements are as follows. We have regular Town Council and redevelopment meetings scheduled for April 20th, May 4th, and May 18th. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Please state your name, who motioned to adjourn.
Ken Schoon moved. Chuck Gardner seconded.
Thank you.
We do this by voice since it's obvious that we're all going to say yes.
All right. Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis votes yes. Counselor Schoon?
Definitely.
Counselor Schoon votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Five to zero to adjourn this Town Council meeting at 8:18 on Monday, April 6th. On to the redevelopment.
Yes, it is 8:19 and I will call the order, the redevelopment meeting for April 6th, 2020. And has Mr. Castro tried to join by chance?
He has not tried to join.
Okay, and he may, did we hear from him?
We did not.
Okay, it's okay. I mean, it's not, we can move forward.
We'll still have a forum.
Yes. So I'm going to suggest that we move forward and the public comment portion of this is, is the same. We're asking the residents to send questions or comments in electronically and the town manager will share those with all of us and also share them with the clerk treasurers so they will be recorded in the minutes. Dustin, did you receive anything regarding the redevelopment commission for tonight?
I did not.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us to the consent agenda.
I so moved that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion is second and any discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly, I have Commissioner Gardner making the motion to accept the consent agenda and it was seconded by Commissioner Kulturitis. And then for the roll call vote, Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner votes yes. Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis votes yes. Commissioner Schoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schoon votes yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki votes yes. And President, Commissioner Mellon votes, or, all right. Commissioner Mellon votes yes as well. We skipped over the roll call vote and just for the matter of minutes, all five commissioners are in video attendance at this meeting.
Oh, thank you, I apologize, Wendy. I've lost my, I can see people, but I've, I've lost my, part of my screen. So anyway, thank you. And then our, pardon me?
It's all good.
Okay. All right. And then our only order of business, if I'm recalling correctly, is the engagement letter with, regarding the refinancing. Is that correct, Dustin?
Yes, it is. We're looking for the, the mere recommendation to authorize the letters of engagement and further authorize the town manager to sign those letters of engagement.
I move that we approve and authorize the town manager to sign the engagement letters for Baker-Tilly, Stiefel, and Barnes &amp; Thornburg for refinancing the Series 2010 EDC bonds.
This is Chuck Gardner, I second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can you please call the roll, Wendy?
Certainly, Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
He led the motion and then it was seconded by Commissioner Gardner. And I'm going to start the roll call vote with Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner votes yes. Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis votes yes. Commissioner Schoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schoon votes yes. Commissioner Tulowitzki, that's your cue.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki votes yes. President Mellon?
Yes.
We have a five to zero affirmative for Mr. Anderson to enter into the engagement to refinance the bonds.
Thank you. We have no reports tonight and the announcements are as follows. We have regular redevelopment commission meetings scheduled for April 20th, 20th, May 4th, and May 18th. And that brings us to adjournment.
So moved. Chuck Gardner.
Seconded was first. That's Kulturitis, was that you?
Yes.
Motion is second.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Sitting in my seat to see how people will vote.
Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Very good. I have five to zero to adjourn the redevelopment commission meeting at 8:23 PM on Monday, April 6th.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a beautiful evening.
Thank you.
Stay be well.
You too, bye-bye.
Bye.